Okay. Full call Dixon.
Here.
Finley. She will be late. Fawcett.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Pilling.
Here.
Slaughter. And Mayor Babbage is excused.
Okay. Well, we're gonna start with approval of the consent agenda. Which is meeting minutes for April 25th and the approval of the bills that were sent out.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve it to fill the agenda during the ministry 25th.
Okay. Now, let's see, next is communications to trustees. And so I don't think there was any written communications.
No, there was none.
Okay. Then we can go ahead and open the floor to any citizen comments and. You know, I guess Toby would want me to say something, construct about three minutes and all that good stuff. Go ahead.
I'll go ahead and give you a two for one within three minutes. One is kudos to staff for the work you did facilitating the discussion with. To clarify up some of the issues on the trail mapping exercise. And the product that we're hoping to get out for the open streets and trails. Really going to be clarified some of the concerns, I believe you're going to discuss that. The other also kudos to staff and modern engineering for putting together the field day. To look at the drainage issues on Starlift, Sherwood, and Blue grouse. Bill was there, Ted and Mark, appreciate that. Definitely want to be involved with that because my house is at the bottom of the drain pipe. So whatever water flows, flows down the hills, I have concern with what's on property. Thanks.
Great, thanks Paul. Go ahead Marty. Sorry. We'll save the best for us. Oh, right, yes, please.
So, my name is Marty Semmer and I live at 202 Blue Grouse Trail. Reflecting on the history of Blue River and the natural light sky. And now exploring international dark sky community certification. I'll get going back to 2019. This concept started with the citizens advisory committee survey in 2019. Asking residents about any severe dark skies. Fast forward to the board of trustees meeting 2022. It was during this meeting that I gave each trustee a brochure packet and. You know, if you remember the red flashlight and that. Fast forward again to the recent citizens advisory committee survey. Asking town residents their opinions on the town of Blue River. Going for international dark sky community certification designation. The results of this survey are on the town website and the citizens advisory committee. The CAC does plan to give a report to the board of future meetings. But this from the survey results, I would like to know one question which responses. The survey question, do you wish for Blue River to see the dark sky designation? Ninety-five percent or sixty-two percent selected the yes response. Fifty-six percent, or I'm sorry, fifty-six responses or thirty-seven percent selected the no response. It appears the first chapter of the Blue River Natural Night Sky is ending. And the second chapter is about to unfold. Which means my role is changing as chapter two begins. I have taken on a leading role today and it's now time for change. Perhaps it's time for me to take on our coalition building to begin. Thankfully, the citizens advisory committee has stepped up to the plate to lead the initiative. I am happy to be involved in this best service to towns and communities. The most important point I would like to mention is to give many thanks to the mayor. And the board of trustees for directing this effort. With all the issues facing the board of trustees, take a step back to the role. That which you have accomplished on behalf of the natural night sky of Blue River. With your full agenda tonight, I cannot expect a response to my expression of gratitude.
Great, thank you Marty. Go ahead Dan.
Dan Cleary, 23 Rusty Terrace. I want to thank staff and give some. Kudos, the new packet, we've seen it a couple of months now, but I never mentioned it. It's much easier, super easy to search. Not only can you click tabs within it, but you can search it like a normal PDF. I think prior it had always been scanned in. And then also during public comment, are we allowed to ask questions? You know, or is it just common?
I think you can ask questions, but we're not guaranteeing the answer.
Fair enough, so I want to thank the staff for quick attention to a recent request or request a month ago. About permit process. I was, I was told that, you know, a couple of things, one. Couldn't be considered due to pending ordinance doctrine. Can the board provide any clarity on when does a pending ordinance become pending? Is it upon, you know, the intent to make a change? The discussion to make a change or the actual introduction of the ordinance? That's why.
That's probably a Bob question.
And Bob would answer.
Do you want me to answer?
Go for it Bob.
All right, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yes.
All right, the pending ordinance doctrine affixes according to the court. When the government takes a step towards the implementation of the ordinance, not the drafting the ordinance. But the board, the board or the body, governing body says, we would like to have this thing taken on or researched or reviewed. Oftentimes, some courts, not necessarily in Colorado, have says, has, have said that it's when the government opens a file on the matter. Whatever that might mean. But the way it's interpreted in Colorado and the way most communities apply the, the pending ordinance doctrine is when we've taken some kind of step. Towards the creation of an ordinance or actually started to draft the ordinance is what I always feel comfortable doing.
Thank you.
You bet.
Second part, the second question was, I had asked about an appeal process. I was told, you know, there's, there's no means to an appeal for an administrative decision. And I had a question in the current code 2684. The PNC was identified to hear appeals administrative decisions on zoning. Now, I don't know if this would be zoning or use, but I guess I was looking for clarification because it was said that. There is no means to appeal other than district court, which I found is crazy. Is that, is that due to use and not zoning?
Yeah, but the complexity that you're in is the fact that you're asking for determination of use. You want to use your property in a certain manner. That is an interpretation by the city manager or the town manager. Who says the use is not permitted on the property. If an appeal where that were allowed to go to PNC or somebody else. Their decision that you're allowed to do the use would be a legislative decision. In other words, they would be modifying the zone district to allow your use and they would do not have that authority. So allowing that kind of question to go through an administrative appeal is kind of a waste of time. What the better course of action is to await the new LUC, which doesn't expressly allow this, the town manager to. Craft an opinion that you can appeal, but the same issue is going to come up for you. Dan is that the decision is going to be, you cannot use your property that way. And I don't know how we would put that in front of the PNC because they have no authority to, to rule otherwise. So the best way, I mentioned through Michelle, the best way to address the issues goes directly to the board of trustees and ask them to change his own district. To allow for the use of the property that you seek so that the zone district could be changed to allow that use.
Thank you, yeah, no, I, I was really just trying to understand because it seemed to me in chapter two. A PNC had previously been identified to hear appeals on, you know, both building official decisions and administrative decisions in 268. But I appreciate the clarification.
You bet.
Thank you.
Okay, well Dan, I stand corrected, we have some answers for you.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that's it for probably public comment then. Let's see. So we can go ahead and move into business, which I think the first thing we have under business is Brian is here with the county. Yeah. Well. Thank you for coming Brian, well, yeah.
Yeah, so we have Brian Boehr, the director of the Summit County Emergency Management. And you had asked a while ago to have a very understanding of what happens, what do you as a board of trustees do? If there were a catastrophic emergency within town, so kind of those clarifications, understanding. What emergency management does and how all those operations work, so yeah. We're kind of free fall, free flowing tonight. I guess if you guys want a more formal presentation, we can certainly arrange that in the future.
Yeah, so thank you for having me again, my name is Brian Boehr. The director of emergency management for the county. I live in the town of Breckenridge and our office and emergency operations center is in the town of Frisco. And so like Michelle said, we chatted and I think the, the goal was to keep it pretty informal this evening. And so what I thought I would do is maybe just give you a brief overview of. Kind of what emergency management is in terms of the response process. A little bit about what Michelle talked about specifically how that might affect the town of Blue River. You guys in your official capacities. And then just answer any questions you may have and. Ideally, this, this would give you guys a little bit better idea of where everything stands today and also. If in the future, if you want a more structured type of presentation or anything like that, that would, I'd be more than happy to, to do that. So, and as I'm talking again, super informal, please feel free to, if something jumps to your mind or if you have any questions, please jump in. But for emergency management, basically what emergency management is, it's a little bit deceiving because. Really only about five percent of what emergency management is is incident response. And ninety-five percent of it is really getting ready for that. And the way I kind of describe it is sometimes I'll use the analogy of a orchestra. Or other times I'll use the analogy of a Broadway play. And so using the example of a Broadway play, the actual play that people buy tickets to and go and see. Is really a finished product that has taken lots of months of work to get to that point. Starting from when the play is written, we have emergency plans that are constantly being written and updated. And then the, the music is written, the. Past of characters and actors is, you know, past and they've got dress rehearsals and all of that stuff goes into kind of the finished product. And so that's a lot of what emergency management is, really we're, we're coordinating entity. And so on a daily basis, I do a lot of planning, I do a lot of preparedness work. But most importantly, I get to know all of the public safety partners and how they operate. So that when there is larger incidents, I have a better idea of how to bring everybody together. To kind of read from the same script or play from the same sheet, music, whatever analogy you want to make. And so the way that, that that works is, you know, every day there's. Emergencies everywhere, right, and we handle them with law enforcement or whatever, EMS and their smaller incidents that. Don't really require a lot of coordination, it's what these people do day in and day out. And so. I don't get involved in any of that obviously because there's no need. But generally, when larger incidents happen, that's when more and more agencies start coming together. That don't normally work together and so that's where emergency management comes in. To kind of bring all of those people together and have them function efficiently under, you know, one umbrella. And so with that, there's, I always say, I say there's the incident and there's the emergency. So I use a wildfire for example, wildfire will be needs. And so the firefighters are going to come, we're going to bring in lots of stuff to put that fire out. The people that are in charge of, of that fire, the fire chiefs are really worried about that fire. And that's what we want, we want them to be worried about that fire. We don't want them worrying about other things. And it's all the other things that are created around that wildfire that I refer to as the emergency. And so those are the things like evacuations, mass notification, alert and warning. Emergency sheltering, traffic control, family identification, environmental health. All of those things that are created by that incident is the emergency and that's what emergency management also does is we. Collect all of that and take that off of the plate of the incident commander. And the people that are worried about that incident. And so they can focus on fighting that wildfire and keeping houses from burning down while we manage all of the other stuff. Around that and then finally what we do is we're kind of the link from. Between government and the incident response. And so we're kind of the entity that brings all of that together. And so we have emergency operations center in Frisco, we just renovated it. And that's kind of the place where all of that happens. And so from there, two of the biggest things that I really try and do. You know, broad level is one, have command of the facts. So my goal every time there's a large incident is that the emergency operations center is the place that. If anybody has any questions or has a need to know any information related to anything about that larger emergency, that's the place to get it. And the way that I accomplish that is I staff that emergency operations center with all of the stakeholders that are involved. And the people that are in that emergency operations center, but they're not a decision maker, they are one phone call removed from a decision. So even if a phone call or a question comes into the emergency operations center that. We have not, don't have the answer for, we likely or the goal is that we can get it very quick. So that's one of the big things that's done there and then another big thing that's done is resource management. And so I'll get into this a little bit and how it applies to you guys, but basically. One of the things that happens during larger incidents is we've run out of stuff. And so we have to start bringing stuff in from elsewhere. And if you start needing to bring in a lot of stuff. In a short period of time, that can get really overwhelmed. So we have processes and procedures and. The experience and training to kind of manage a system to request those resources. Bring them in and actually use them efficiently and then when they're done, demobilize them and send them home. And make sure that all of the record keeping and everything is square away for future financial considerations. And so that's kind of a broad overview of what, how emergency management integrates into the larger. Incident or disaster response. And so for you guys here in the town of Blue River, one of the fundamental. Concepts in emergency management is that every single disaster begins and ends locally. So at the most local level possible, that's where it starts and that's where it ends. And so even take the biggest, take nine eleven for example. That was a major international incident. And I don't have to go into all of the things that were involved with the response to nine eleven. But at the end of the day, that was a local incident, that's how it started and, and that's how it ended, right? The first nine one one call, the local fire department showed up to the towers. And then, you know, albeit years later, when everything was said and done, the last people to leave there. Kind of close that incident out were the local Manhattan authorities. So even something as big as nine eleven is, begins and ends locally. And so same thing here, the principle applies here. So there's a, a major incident in the town of Blue River. That is your incident and that's your authority. And so if that incident gets to the point where it overwhelms your resources. And when I say overwhelms your resources, the things that are used on a normal day to day basis, right? Like we have mutual aid or it's really considered automatic aid within the county. You know, you guys have, if you're, all of your law enforcement is on a call. If there's a significant call, we don't just wait for them to clear a call, right? You're likely going to get a count of Breckenridge that's going to get dispatched on the call or the sheriff's office, whoever, whichever. Law enforcement might be closer. But it'll get to a point where maybe that methodology or those resources are overwhelmed. And you guys need help and so that's when you guys would come to. The county or me specifically and say, hey, we are in trouble, we need help. You know, this is what's going on and then that would open up all of the county resources. To help out and then at that point. If the county exhausts all of our resources, then we go to the state and we make requests to the state. There's, you know, there's statute behind how all of this happens and there's systems in place and. But the, the resource request processes. You know, goes through the state department of homeland security and emergency management. And then there's some, some business stuff around there. So, you know, a lot of times you'll hear, well, is there a disaster declaration, right? And so. At the county level, we have one declaration case that we review. It's a, that's called a local disaster emergency and that's in statute and all of the parameters around that. And the first question or the natural question would be, well, when or how or why would the county? Declare a local disaster emergency and the reason why would be one, when that happens. Some of the components of our emergency operations plan go into effect. That include things like. Our HR policy, certain policies are amended, we can reassign personnel for emergency duties. Another big thing with a local disaster emergency is some of our finance policies are suspended. A good example would be for, you know, on a normal basis, anything over five thousand dollars requires. Three estimates, anything over twenty-five thousand dollars requires. You know, RFP and a public notice and all of that, so some of those things are changed because we need to have the ability to during. A disaster, be able to make more efficient purchases. The other thing that that does for us, and again, this is probably getting a little bit in the weeds, but. It also starts the clock on who are going to get a federal reimbursement. And so for example, when we got the first case of COVID in Summit County. In the state of Colorado, one of the first things that I did was made the recommendation to the board of county commissioners that we declare. A local disaster emergency because back then, if you remember that far back, you know, we had no idea where it was going. Had an idea that it was likely to be some type of FEMA declaration. But not knowing, I wanted to get the clock started on our ability to get reimbursement. If it would not happen, so. So that's the local disaster emergency process. And then that opens the gates for the state to give us help. And then after that, if we're talking something really big, same thing, when the state runs out of resources, they will go to the feds. And that's when the governor will declare a state of emergency, which will then allow. Allow them to make the request to the federal government to declare an emergency to give us all of the. Other gazillions of resources. But scaling that back a little bit, on a daily basis, really, the, the link is between. Michelle and myself and the board of county commissioners and the, the county manager. And the way that works is, you know, if, if you guys are overwhelmed or there's a, a major incident here, we're pretty quickly going to activate the emergency operations center. One of the things that we do or a component of that emergency operations center is we have what we call a policy board. And there's some standing members that are on the policy board, commissioners, county managers, sheriffs. Our finance director, HR director, but then depending on what that incident is, we add some people to that. Policy group and so if it was something affecting the town of Blue River, Michelle would be the person that we add the policy group. She's part of that.
I love how the fence is key.
Locked down.
Do I interrupt yourself?
That's me. And so again, that's how we would, that, that's the connection. Between anything of interest to you guys in your potential capacity or as residents really. Michelle would be part of the policy group and that's that higher level executive group that's making the executive level decisions. Is tied into the incident response or the awareness of what's going on, how it's affecting. Your community and then also a big part of that is getting the feedback from the community. Into the EOC and into the incident response. Because we have a good, good idea of how things are going and we have lots of different. Measures to, to take to evaluate the response, but one of the most important things is getting feedback from the community. And so that's also why we would bring Michelle in to be part of that policy group. To have those open lines of communication. So I feel like that was a mouthful. Is that kind of what you were looking for, Michelle, I don't know?
I think so and, and, and I should say too. Dave, as our chief of police, as the operations center is, is going through a bit of a restructure, set the IGA today. He will be our representative, all the law enforcement, chiefs of fire chiefs and EMS will all be. On what is known as the new board of directors. But he would also be involved and, and actually, you know, as the public information officers group, we all have different, different roles. Within that group as well, when there's an emergency, depending on where the emergency is, for instance, I think it was. Is it the, oh, fire, your worst fire? Yeah, so I sat in the emergency operations center with Brian on that fire assisting wherever. And that's just kind of how those groups all, all work and are trained. The public information officers group, they meet monthly and, and go through different scenarios along with law enforcement. And the emergency operations center, so that's kind of how that all moves together.
And that's a great point, so I was kind of focusing a little bit on the, the executive functions, but. When I talk about like ninety-five percent of what we do in emergency management is kind of preparing to respond. None of the towns in Summit County have the emergency manager and so most of them, their police chief kind of functions in that. Capacity on a daily basis and so the chief is part of the, the sausage making on a daily basis. He's involved in all of the different committees that I have and the different work groups and the different kind of the operations based stuff. The chief is very involved and from an operations standpoint, depending on, on the nature of. Um depending on on the nature of what was going on, um. He would also be very, very involved in the um in the Emergency Operations Center and at that operations and tactical level.
Brian, could you speak just briefly to, if we activate a system, what is the interaction of the public and work look like between? The you, the manager, EOC and the public? And so we have to do an evacuation or something like that. How are we communicating? What's that interaction look like?
Yeah, great question. So uh to to use an evacuation um as an example, and likely it's in the evacuation because of a wildfire. Um public information is a huge piece of it. So initially, the initial piece is that uh emergency alert and warning of. In notifying the people that need to evacuate, that they have to evacuate. So that's going to be done through our. Um wireless emergency alert system first and foremost. That's like the Amber Alert. Um and then we're going to back that up with um law enforcement and fire going through the neighborhoods. Um you know, we need to go door to door to make sure that that everybody's gotten out. Um but then that quickly transitions to a uh a public information piece. And so Michelle was talking about the. The Public Information Officers Group. We have um what we call our Joint Information Center in um now it's now with. Um it's a room off of our Emergency Operations Center. And so that's a group of training public information officers. That are kind of constantly working to gather all of the information that's coming into the EOC and then disseminate that. Um through the Joint Information Center, through press releases, through social media. Um through press conferences, um all of the different tools that we use. And then finally, if it's something that we're actually evacuating uh the neighborhood or neighborhoods. We very quickly are going to try and have a community meeting. Um the other two things in terms of of sharing information. If we do do an evacuation, one of the things that we do almost simultaneously and we message this. Is we'll establish an evacuation center um where people can at least come and stay out of the elements. Um have a place to sit down and uh get the most up to date information firsthand. And then um and then we would have, depending on what's happening as soon as possible. Uh we would also try and have a community meeting where all of the public safety stakeholders and. Decision makers um can provide the community with most up to date information. Um and then also hopefully answer the questions that people may have. So it's kind of a lot of different. Approaches to getting the information and getting word out. But uh I know that the last um. Was it the Farming Fire? Wherever in Farming? Uh where we had, I think it was probably a maybe a forty eight hour evacuation or so. We held several community meetings and then especially for the affected residents, we also tried. Um even if the evacuation, the evacuation order is generally going to be in place. Um. You know, until we can make sure there's not um any kind of sustained threat. But in the meantime, if it's possible, we do try and run an orderly um system so that residents can at least get back in. Check on their home, get some belongings, um you know, do what they need to do and then um get out of there. So there's a lot of information exchange that. Um that happens through those different stations.
Question.
Yeah.
So you said ninety five percent of your job is preparing.
Mm hmm.
Um. Take a wild guess at how many times I dropped this zoom call from Blue River to this, from town limits to this building.
Four.
Close, three.
Okay.
Um in that, you know, four mile, five mile thing. And I know that in our um. Office, you know, notes that we're talking about broadband, but you know, at what point does emergency management? Get involved in or the or or maybe this is commissioners of of figuring out where those dead spots are. And working to fix them. And we've been trying to get with. Cell phone companies for years and it feels like we're not getting anywhere. Maybe we are, but it doesn't feel like it.
Yeah, it's that'll be. Revealed in the broadband discussion next month, but yeah.
Um so I just, it's it's frustrating um. When there is. You know. So especially in Blue River, maybe it's maybe it's elsewhere too, but here, you know, there there is no calling for help on my opinion. Um and good chunks of it. So like, do you guys get involved with that? Are you aware of that? Is there systems in place? I heard you say, you know, every incident, because I was listening, starts local and ends local. Is that, you know? Every man for themselves when it comes to that kind of thing or or as an organization in with the county, are you working on that?
So definitely a issue, not just here. Um the problem with specifically if we're talking about cell service. Is it's really privately run. And I can't even get. Uh a comprehensive list of cell phone towers because it's proprietary and they don't like to give it up. I'm close. There's some tools that, you know, you can get pretty close. Um but the. The answer is it's really at the commissioner level and at the the state representative level. That we constantly are bringing it up because the, you know, the other, the other real issue is that. As soon as uh. All of our friends from around the world in Denver come up for a weekend. Um it's next to impossible to even place a call where you normally can place a call. Um which obviously has its share of issues. And so. We kind of get the canned response from the. The phone carrier or the cell carriers, but um. It it has gotten a little bit better. I mean, it's not like they're completely ignoring the issue. Um but yeah, there's um it's regularly brought up.
I think it, I think the problem is beyond just dead spots. Uh in a true emergency, my assumption is the capacity will become a problem. Where you can't make a call because it's just not capacity.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a multi-faceted problem.
Mm hmm. Mm hmm.
I will say.
I have a little bit of experience in uh emergency planning.
Hmm.
Uh as it relates to business continuity.
Okay.
Uh so I have a couple oddball questions for you.
Yeah.
You mentioned the uh the control center.
Mm hmm.
It was. I presume there's a backup for that facility itself.
There is, yeah.
Okay, that's good. Can't have the control center that's down and out.
Right, yeah.
Uh an occurrence we had here. Michelle, help me. Paul, you help me. Ten years ago, when the Blue River uh Bridge washed out over here.
Twenty twelve.
The whole side of the county, the town, and effectively the rest of the county uh were isolated. We had no way to get north. Until there was a temporary kind of. Port of the bridge put in over there until that was fixed. Would those kind of things, you know, an isolated incident like that? Uh fall under your curfew?
Because that's where we would, again, um. The county wouldn't have necessarily the resources to to get that. Temporarily restored and what and so that's where we would give the state. And try to get the state to give us assistance to get all of that done quicker than we could do it ourselves.
I will say in that incident, it was lucky that it was a CDOT issue.
Yeah.
It was, it was totally by CDOT. And to address the. What we do know or what we learned through the broadband uh setting that um and this will probably be talked about um next month when they're here. Um we did meet with the cell phone companies at East Horizon. Um who acknowledged that they show a tower on the other side of Hoosier Pass and in the Pusser Valley area. Which explains why if you're at the top of Hoosier, you actually get nice reception. Um and then there's a, they their maps let out show a gap. Until you get to Breckenridge, that where it basically there's no service between there and there. Um. They have told us they are taking it out the line. And that's worse. They acknowledge there's a gap and. Yeah.
More importantly, at what point do I get to drive a fire truck or? Cause in a, in a, in a staff retreat, we were having arguments on who was going to get to drive what.
Alright.
I have a police car at my disposal. I don't know if I'm allowed to drive that. Maybe that's a David Cole's question, but I really prefer the fire.
Yeah, the bigger the better. Yeah, we could try and make that.
Um I got one question so far. So um. As usual, I I hear we are putting a lot on Michelle. We all appreciate everything Michelle does, but Michelle also is not full time in the county. If something was to go down that. For whatever reason caused Michelle to be inaccessible. We have the backup. I see John smirking, but you know, he's a. John fully prepared tomorrow to step in and knows what to do.
So I I won't totally speak with John for John, but we do have David who would be here um kind of heading up the law enforcement and the things. As far as the public information officer and the things that would be coordinating, obviously I would have. You know, communications with with Brian finding a route out over to Summit County if that route wasn't available, but also. John is um part of the PIO group, the Public Information Officers Group, learning, taking the FEMA classes that that I've taken, that others have taken. Um and and starting to immerse into that so that he can help out in the Joint Information Center, um should there be. An issue.
Okay, so Brian's team sort of say if. The incident and therefore emergency is going down and they can't get a hold of you within. Whatever the appropriate amount of time, they already know to to contact John.
There would be John, but but the the chain actually would be David.
With our chief involved.
Yeah, our our chief would be the sole person and foremost, even he would probably know, he'd. Him or Brian or someone would be notifying me. Um immediately. So yeah.
Seems like a mayor pro-ten.
No, no.
Yes, that's the.
Hmm, no, that's not. Sounds like the mayor's responsibility. We'll fill in in his back next month. Um, okay. Um. I have one question and and it there's no way around it being semi-specific, but it's not about trying to also. Outline like specific incidents, but. You know, there's a general thought that at some point, if the incident emergency was large enough. Highway nine would be turned one way. In whatever direction. And maybe this really goes back to the communication issues here. I guess I have a lot of flat out issue or concerns about how that would go down, also given the number of access points. Um that we're constantly dealing with here through the town river. That's a lot of access points that have to be. Controlled, for lack of a better term. And of course, if we're trying to efficiently, and you know, and this is also about. We don't have the nice four lane highway. Um barely have two day lanes without running off a close end of the turn or something. So um. I guess that that's one of my general concerns about where large enough incident had. Again, more so our kind of controlling corridor. And again, because of our communication problems gave. Everybody going in right direction, so.
So um a couple of things on that. The first thing is um we actually were working through. We have a work group right now that has been going through our. Um evacuation annex and looking at it and uh the end of this month, we're going to have a. Cable block exercise related to that. Some of the things um. Specifically related to counterflow that you're talking about, so just everyone help is um. There's. That would not be our first, second or third. Um yeah.
Yeah.
Uh one, it's a little bit of a myth that it actually gets people out that much quicker. Uh it doesn't really double. The efficiency like you would think it does. Um the other issue is the, like you talked about, the issues that it creates with. Um all of the different snag points. And we don't have. The law enforcement resources to manage all the different areas that we need traffic control. And then another big concern is uh something that big, we're talking about the bring resources in to the county. And so if we start doing counterflow on Highway nine that way. And we cut off Hoosier Pass from bringing in uh any other resources that we're going to be bringing in. So that really is a last resort. Um and something that, you know, it would. It would likely not be coming from us. Um it would likely be spontaneous people doing it themselves. Um depending on the nature of the fire. And you know, the other thing too that. I try and when I talk to a lot of the different neighborhood groups and. Or not, is I try and also be very frank about the situation that we're in. And kind of the example that I give. Um from my past life, I was um. Uh in Baltimore City and I was, we got a Formula One race right in the middle of downtown. And I was put in charge of all of public safety and all of the stuff for that. And the biggest thing was they had to close down. Downtown Baltimore for three weeks to build the racetrack. And so I sat in meetings for probably a week or two of everybody coming up with their best idea. Of how to eliminate gridlock traffic around the city. And finally, I said. Can we all please stop? Nobody is going to eliminate gridlock traffic. It's going to be a nightmare. It's going to be terrible. Like, let's accept the reality. The way to not have that is to cancel the race and not close downtown Baltimore. And so finally, when people wrap their heads around the fact that we can't eliminate. That situation, it all shifted to messaging. And telling people and working with employers to let people come in late or leave early. Or you know, whatever it was, and then tons and tons and tons of messaging. And so linking that back to here, one of the things that I think. I try and be very frank with community groups and groups like this is some of the reality is that there is no solution. And there is no plan. Um if we have. A wildfire like the Paradise Fire or the Campfire that's moving at eighty miles an hour. Uh and it's crossing over Highway nine. There is not a traffic engineer or an emergency manager in the world that has a plan that's going to solve that issue. Um there will be fatalities. There will be injuries. Um it's the nature of living in the mountains and having. One way in and one way out, um which is why we do so much mitigation work, which is why we do so much. We're very, very. Um. Proactive with ordering evacuations and pre-evacuations. And um there's lots that we can do, but at the end of the day. Um we've all. Put ourselves in less than an ideal situation for things like evacuation, wildfire. Um things like that. Again, I'm not saying that to to say that throw my hands up and say, well, we're all just screwed. No, there's a ton that we can do and there's a ton that we do do, but also there's that reality that um. You know, if if there's that situation where we're trying to evacuate the whole county and. You know, there's going to be gridlock. There's going to be cars that break down. There's going to be cars that run out of gas. There's going to be. Um all of these issues that are going to prevent a nice and and orderly um evacuation. So those are the things that we think about. Those are the things that we try and um. Be prepared to manage, but at the end of the day, um it's still going to be. Be prepared to manage, but at the end of the day, um, it's still gonna be. You know, way more complicated than um having to evacuate. You know, in Denver.
The reason I was asking this question is this does seem to be for whatever reason, the question I get from a lot of residents. And it sounds to me like the issue is that it's kind of a mess. That one of our first go-to strategies here is that it'd be to reverse the flow.
Is one hundred percent. Yeah.
I mean, that's almost more like that's only gonna happen if Highway nine is officially the fires on.
Yeah.
And otherwise, chances are everything you're, you're planning is really centered around keep your Highway nine. Open, that's in both directions.
Cause, cause the other thing too, and there's so many different facets of this, but. The other thing too, that when you start doing contraflow, like even when we order an evacuation. Um, there's, there's risk in evacuation, right? By putting more people on the road, bringing people out of their houses. Now we're, we're creating an additional risk um that is there and so. There's a lot that goes into not just traffic management, but the infrastructure. And so if we were to. To intentionally have people going the wrong direction uh on, on any roadway. There's a lot of traffic infrastructure hazards that cars aren't, the roads aren't designed for cars to be traveling that way. So we're inherently increasing the risk and the danger of motorists by sending them that opposite way. Um, so yeah, like I said, more realistically. If, if that happens, it's gonna be spontaneous and it's gonna be people doing it on their own and it's maybe because the fire is right there. And right, you know, um, I'm not gonna say that I wouldn't do the same thing if I was trying to get my family out, but. It's not gonna be coordinated, um, we say like.
In uh, in the event of that, of an evacuation, do we have uh? Anything in place with Park County where maybe a facility and Fair Play would also be named as a evacuation point for us?
Absolutely. And what we would do if we had evacuation like that, it would be in multiple places. Um, and just as an example, uh, this was during COVID, what was the fire in Bram? Couple years ago, I was watching Troublesome, so for Troublesome, we opened an evacuation center. Uh, at the Silverthorne Rec Center. Um, and we stopped that and we had, we were in communication with. Um, Bram County to have all of the information and we were taking care of their evacuies. We had the right cross there we had. And so same thing, same model would apply.
That's exactly what happened with the. Uh, the upper end of North Boulder, uh, North Broadway. And Highway thirty-six and North of Boulder, when the troublesome fire happened. The Boulder County people were looking at the personal traffic and they finally missed it and said, no. See, we have to evacuate the left of the first traffic.
Yeah, it's really a last resort if that, cause once you really get into it. The juice is worth the squeeze. It, it would be one thing if it really did get everybody. Out that quick, but. It really, it really doesn't. It almost creates more problems. I was just gonna say, that's exactly where, when you have I ninety-five and you have, you know, all of those lanes. And everybody's going one direction out and there's lots of other arteries and side roads and everything like that, then that's a different story.
Is it true that Highway nine is a military road? That's not a myth I keep hearing, it's a military road. So it always has to stay open because it's a military road.
That is true, I said. Um, but not highway, not to my knowledge.
I believe it's emergency access because if I suddenly were to close and all of that were to shut down, that, that's one of the only accesses out. So they do, they do keep it open for that. I don't know, military, but it is emergency. Access. I know it takes a heck of a lot to shut that thing down and it's on the forefront of it usually.
But no, that, there are like, there are roads of military significance and highways and stuff.
Brings up an interesting, Mark's question brings up some interesting thoughts. In many of the places around the state of Colorado and elsewhere. There's a fair amount of signage of the touch of emergency evacuation routes. I don't know of any here in Silver County.
So there's one thing that we're discussing, that's by design. Uh, because, because of the limited. Evacuation routes we have. We don't want. To have pre-established and signed evacuation routes. Because given and while, while fires are big ones, um, we don't, there could be an instance where. There's a fire that's compromising Hoosier Pass and it's all up there. And we don't want people going that way. We want people going this way or we want. So one of the things that we have discussed though is um, some people have brought up that it might. Be a good idea to have some type of signage more in the neighborhoods of even just how to get out of the neighborhoods. Um, but in terms of like published uh evacuation routes, that comes up pretty frequently. Um, and, and we intentionally do not want to publish designated routes because that might change. Um, and it's in the nature of, of the incident.
I believe Ruby Ranch is one that um is working on what they call reverse signage. Um, because if you think especially like our road, if you were a visitor and suddenly they're saying you need to leave, not necessarily. Go this way, go that way, but just to direct people to get to Highway nine.
Yeah.
Give people, um, so they're working on a neighborhood subdivision. Reverse signage so that if there was an emergency, people can follow those signs to get out to the main arteries to, to safety. And I, and I get it, cause you can get turned around pretty easy.
That, that's what we've just recently. With this committee, this evacuation committee have been discussing is that there seems to be consensus that that. Is probably a good idea to start engaging the neighborhoods for them to look at, cause yeah, Ruby Ranch is a great example. Um, some of the bigger neighborhoods like Wilder and this next Cortina, you know, you can get pretty turned around in some of the bigger. Neighborhoods, so that's um, that's the one thing that we are, the other thing that. We're talking about potential signage for that, that doesn't exist is um. In some of the areas that could be affected by uh a dam failure or severe flash flooding. One of the things that I added to our emergency operations plan and given some. And cursory training for our first responders, but the idea of a high ground evacuation. Um, and so if it's like flash flooding, for example, or the dam fails. That it could be almost no notice that there's a, a flood wall or a flood wave coming. And we would be putting people in more danger by telling them to get in their vehicles. Um, and get on Highway nine, cause Highway nine follows uh the Blue River, basically is the Blue River. Um, and so the concept with that is if, if there really is no notice, we would send out that alert. That says seek high ground immediately, which is basically on foot, go away from the Blue River. Um, and so we've talked about potentially working with towns to maybe add some signage or develop some signage. That would indicate to somebody who's not familiar with our geography where high ground is or which way to go.
Breaking range guarantee to sort of fix it.
Yeah.
What about someone that's.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, or what about that?
I think they're a good sheet though.
Um, along the lines of Kelly's questions about cell phone towers. And we, we've never really dove into this or gotten much traction on it, but the concept of digging another north to south way through. Blue River. Lots of designers on that.
In terms of?
Well, right now, there, there's Highway nine is it. Like this bridge goes out, there's, there's no way, there's no way through town. There's no. And, and not that we're gonna totally solve it tonight, cause there's a lot of private property.
Yeah.
Involved, but I would imagine. You'd have interest in seeing us figuring something out.
Yeah.
Supportive of that.
Yeah. Yeah, unfortunately, that becomes a huge state C D.
I get stuck in all the C dot cases for what it's worth.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else for Brian?
Forty. David.
That could be our only way across.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, great. Thank you, Brian, for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, red line review, land use code. We're on to Bob and. I guarantee we're gonna do it today by way of Michelle, this is gonna take us some five minutes.
Yeah, seven. You have access to a red line version. Of the entire land use code. The way in which I would recommend over the next month that you review, the code would be to flip through the red line version. And you can see in that version, the changes that were made to the original language. Those changes were in response to, to um comments that the, the board of trustees. Were generally in accord with. I mean, there may have been one or two uh changes that an individual board member asked for, but didn't get some traction. But for the most part, what I tried to implement by going through the recordings and, and putting into this version. Is what I felt that the board had kind of a consensus on. So read through the, or flip through, don't read, you don't need to read every single word. But flip through the red line version and look at those strikeouts and those additions to see if. You feel that the language was what the board wanted to implement. Another way to review the code is once you get comfortable with that, is to go through the clean version. And look at it and go through and look at the zone districts, look at the regulations with regard to use. Think about somebody putting a deck in or somebody wanting to build a house from scratch. Um, and go through the code in the sense that it's gonna be administered in the way it's written. Most importantly for you though, is that the code is not set in stone. It can be changed now, it can be changed when you have your hearing and it can be changed after your hearing. And in fact, you may have changes to consider when the P N Z finishes their review, cause their review will be done before you. Um, and so you'll get to see what they're thinking and what their, what their thought process is. So this is a time for you to sit down with the document, get familiar with it, look at different scenarios that you want to um. Touch and feel, if you will, and, and just look at how land use would be handled within the community. I would implore every one of you, and when you have any questions in your review, to call me. And, and ask me the questions, work through the issue, because what you come up with may be very helpful to the entire board. And kind of narrowing in on things that you might wanna still consider changing. There may be a specific kind of use or, or accessory improvement or structure that you're concerned about. You've read in the code that it's gonna be handled this way and you'd like to be handled a different way. We can go ahead and tackle those issues. Um, and if you wanna talk through them with me and I can give you ideas on what we, what we could do with language. I'm more than happy to do that, because the ultimate goal is to get you comfortable with the document. So that you know how decisions will be made and what's going to be decided and then go forward from there. Major things that are in the code that you probably wanna pay a little bit of attention to. Is the fact that there is a new zone district. Um, based upon comments provided by Mr. Cleary, as well as what was discussed with the board. There's a new zone district that is. In essence, the R one zone district. But what it does, it's an RP one zone district, a residential preservation. Zoning, which would allow an owner to come to the board. And ask to rezone their property into the RP one zone district. The RP one zone district is exactly the same as the R one zone district, except it sets the setbacks. It sets the building heights. At the existing setbacks and existing heights of the structures and of the lot. That's in the town, so it basically legalizes these R one zone district properties that may be undersized. Or the structure was built a few feet too tall, or it was encroaching upon the setback. And these were things that we did not notice in the history of the town being done. Um, and that today, there's no way we would ever remove those properties or those structures. We just wouldn't do it. So we allow a zone district to be placed in the property so that they are completely conforming. It does not mean that in the future they could to build the, the building taller, or they get to encroach in the setback more. Or they get to divide their property into smaller piece. It cements the property as it is. At the time of the rezoning to the RP one zone district as it is. It is a rather novel um thing to do. Most communities um would, would not. Legitimize non-conforming structures or non-conforming lots. They would keep them in that standard, that, that status. Um, but here in Blue River, we have way too many non-conforming lots and non-conforming structures. To use that kind of approach on the property owners. It seems more user friendly and citizen friendly. To allow them to make their lots legal. Because encroaching in setbacks and making it a few feet too high or having a substandard sized lot. For example, many lots in the, in the community are an acre, acre and a half, two acres. Or under two acres, and yet our zone district for, for the residential R one zone district requires eighty thousand square feet. Well, you're not gonna. Punish an owner because twenty years ago, they were allowed to cut their property into properties the size that they are today. I'm thinking of the Aspen View subdivision. None of those properties in that subdivision meet the two acre standard. They're all non-conforming. But the zone, the new RP zone district allows them to make them completely legal. And, and, and legitimize their property and it helps in the transfer of the property. There's never a stigma associated with the non-conforming. So that's an interesting novel way to handle non-conforming lots and structures in the community. That's something you may wanna think about, look at and see how it might fit with you. The um other major thing in the code is the creation of a board of adjustment. This is a, a sta, this is a statutorily required board that's supposed to hear. Appeals on variances, so if I want to vary the zone district or vary the standards for my property. I am able to go to this body and have a quasi judicial hearing. And have the body consider whether or not my hardship warrants me getting relief. And to build differently than the code would require. We're required by state law to have that body. We have that body today, but it's a one sentence line in our code that recognizes the P N Z is to serve in that role. Um, the. The reason why the board of adjustment is created the way it is, and I'll tell you what that is all about in a moment. Is because it makes more sense that these kinds of hearings, quasi judicial hearings, which can go to district court pretty quickly. Those decisions probably should be made by the board of trustees. Why? Because the board of trustees is more um, more accustomed and practiced in doing. Quasi judicial hearing processes, whereas the P N Z. My setting with the P N Z is they handled the site planning aspects of land use very well. They can apply the zoning standards, the, the architectural requirements exceedingly well. And that's where their strength is, but they don't have experience or practice in doing quasi judicial hearings, which would go to district court. So I'm proposing that this board of adjustment be the board, board of trustees. You would hear these kind of variance cases, which do not come up very frequently. And you would be able to make a decision with me in the room, so we can make sure we do a good job. And if we get appealed, we'll have the best decision possible to be successful in the appeal. So that's a major change in the code is to, is in, in, in viewing the board of trustees. With this power of being the board of adjustment under state law. You'll see that in the code. Those are the two major things that you may not have, we may not have talked about thoroughly, but they're in there and you may wanna pay attention to them. So I'll stop here, um, because I am sure as you go through the versions of the land use code, you're gonna have questions. And let's get those questions aired before we get to the hearing next month. Um, and before we get to the P N Z's comments. And the more of these that we can handle offline and then present a thorough concept, idea, or issue in our public hearing, it'll be much more efficient than trying to review the document in that hearing process. So I guess you have homework, as I told the P and Z, they have homework, too. They're doing the exact same thing.
So maybe we should clarify for a moment here, Bob. So the the documents that were attached here tonight are basically a culmination of all of our work sessions over how many months we've been doing this.
Correct.
You have it. P and Z is currently reviewing to discuss at their meeting next month?
June fourteen.
Fourteen. Okay, at which point they're gonna discuss and I suppose coming to a consensus on what their uh, well, are they officially vote and approve it?
Yes, they're required by state law to hold a public hearing, and they're supposed to make a recommendation to you with regard to the land use code. They can recommend that you change it, they can recommend that you approve it, they can recommend that you deny it. Their their recommendation is up to them, but they will hold a a formal vote after a public hearing, and I will be attending that public hearing with them in person.
That's for June fourteen.
Correct.
Okay, then me, as the trustees, at between now and really the June trustees meeting, to confer with you on anything we want to bring up in June. But to be clear, at June's trustees meeting, that's the public hearing.
Yes.
We're kind of taking a little more formal step here.
Correct.
I'm looking at your vote, and is that a first reading?
No. No, you'll you there you're there's no requirement that you do a first and second reading on anything you do. We do that just to kind of as an introduction. It's really not called a first reading. We do an introduction. Here, you've been introduced to this code for months and months and months, so it'll come to you as a public hearing. It does not mean, however, that you must make a decision the night of the hearing. You can continue the hearing to another date. You could find that there's far too many issues to chew on that you want to hold it over to July. There is nothing wrong with that, and and a document this large and a policy this large may necessitate that you hold it into the next month. That's still an option for you. But you also have the option on the night of the hearing, which is June twentieth. You have that option that night to make a decision to adopt the the land use code. And you'll do so by an ordinance that'll be provided to you that covers the land use code and does what we call adoption by reference. So we don't have to preprint the entire code in the newspaper. You'll adopt an ordinance that adopts the code if you want to go in that direction. And even in the night of the hearing, you can make all the changes you want to make. You can change words, you can change letters, you can change sections, and I'll be there in person to to walk us through that. And hopefully, I'm looking at Michelle here, hopefully, we don't have too much on the agenda that night, because this will take time.
So we'll circle back on that later with Michelle.
So if you have requests, special treats, let me know.
Dr. Pepper.
We can we can arrange some Dr. Pepper. This will be a big, big issue or big issue, a big item on the agenda. We will also have the broadband plan presentation as well as because citizen advisory can be this this month, they will be presenting their recommendations um, next month as well. So let me know what you like. How can I cover John?
So.
Questioning the friend.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Can I take the board? Um, theoretically, Bob, the changes and things, we've already done that work, and that's what we have done for the last, what feels like twelve years.
It's been eleven and a half, but rounded up.
But in theory, right, like I'm looking through it right now on our website, the red lane version. Like, the things that we would discuss next week, unless we find something that maybe you added in here to see if we actually are paying attention to what's in it, but theoretically, hearing back from planning and zoning, their concerns, which have they done this, too? Have they done this twelve year long?
They have, well, no, they started, and then it came to you guys. Or through this last month, they did receive the the draft plan with a memo from Bob and instructions from Bob. And so they are, I'm gonna be sending out a reminder that they are to be prepared for their meeting for the public hearing, to gain any citizen input, their input, and to make a recommendation to you one way or another.
So really, then we hear what the public has to say, we hear what plan is really has to say, and then we go back in to what we've already said, and then like, yes, no, maybe.
It it depends on what you hear. I mean, P and Z may have three issues that they want you to talk about. They could have twenty issues. Same thing with the citizens. They could have this equal number of different sizes of packages they want you to consider. Ultimately, it's up to you, and we'll use the time that we have allocated to get as far as we can, which you may get all the way. In which case you have the option of approving it that night, or pushing it off until July. That will always be a possibility for you. I have no idea how many comments you're gonna get from P and Z or from the public.
If P and Z came to us with three things, we could then come back with, well, this is why the board went with this, blah, blah, blah.
Yes.
Obviously, hearing what they want to know, but hearing the rationale from us as to why we made the changes that we made, kind of a clarifying deal.
Very much so. They they could ask simple questions that we can just deal with right there on the floor of your meeting room. I'll just conjure up one thing they might come back with, if it's possible. They may come back and say, we would like to be the board of adjustment. And if they were to suggest that to you, that would be up to you to make that change, to switch from the board of adjustment being the P and the BOT and make it the P and Z. I would advise you at that time what the implication is of making that change and what it would mean to the town and to you and to the P and Z. And then you would hear me and maybe some other people, maybe the P and Z members will attend and explain why they want to do that job. And then you'll be ultimately called into the issue and asked to make a decision on which way you want to go. That's an example, one issue that may come up.
But in theory, this two hundred and forty page document, the board has already gone through. We've already made the changes, so we really just need to look at, as you said, the red line and see if you made stuff up.
Yeah, with the understanding of this, you've looked at the document, for example, chapter sixteen B, which has all the design standards in it. You've looked at that, which was mostly new from the ground up. The red lines are in there are changes you asked to the red to the clean document you had before. So some of this stuff is, if it was redlined from the very beginning, you would have the entire document be redlined. So you've seen this, you've chewed on it, we've walked through the code, and what you see in the red lines are changes that you said the night of us considering those particular change, new provisions of the code. So you know, I'm trying to think of a specific example. In our discussion, I recommended that we not have a prohibition or not have a regulation on flagpoles. Because it was done in other communities, you never asked for it, I put it in there for you to think about. I didn't expect you to say, no, we would like to regulate flagpole flagpoles. And in particular, we don't want to have freestanding flagpoles. So you'll see that change in there largely redlined, that you asked for in addition to the to the flagpole regulations that were given to you initially. If you don't like it today or tomorrow or before the public hearing, you can change it. You can say, now that I've thought about it more, I think we shouldn't have flagpoles, or we should have flagpoles, or the flag should be, you know, certain size. You can make those changes as you wish. But what's in there is what you all talked about and seemed to agree to the night that we talked about flagpoles.
Okay, just a couple seconds.
And I will, my goal is their meeting is on the fourteenth. While your packet may not be completely ready on the fifteenth, my goal is first thing Thursday morning for you to at least have what their recommendations or what those comments from that meeting were, so that you can have that ahead of the whole package that will be. Mr. John Deboe, how do you think this is?
You look excited.
Actually, you know what?
Okay.
Okay, so so again, at this point, everybody should review this further. Specifically, we reach out to Michelle or Bob with any questions right now. I do have one specific question, the or the uh, the board, the what was it called? The board of adjustments. Is there a third option on who that can be?
Yeah, you could appoint an entirely new board of citizens who set that that body. So it wouldn't be P and Z, it wouldn't be you, it'd be the new board of adjustment, and you could have new citizens sitting in that role. They would need to be trained as to what a variance is and what the process is. And if you were to do that, I would recommend that when they do have an application for a variance, that they that you have a lawyer attend with them, either myself or Molly, to attend to make sure when they make their decision, it's a decision that would, if it went to district court. And again, it's very easy to take these decisions to district court and very inexpensive. If they did go that way, at least we have a very well done decision that will not fail because the process process was incorrect. It would fail if it did fail on the merits of the decision, and that's a position you want to be in. Not because we didn't hold the right kind of hearing or make the right kind of vote. The lawyers will help you make sure that body make sure that they do it right. So I'm always a big proponent of any matter that's gonna go directly to court, that you have a lawyer involved in helping the body make the decision. That's a third option.
Given our participation issues to begin with, forming yet another committee essentially. Okay, I just wanted, so so we should all review this, get questions over to Bob and Michelle. And then at June's meeting, we'll just have to take kind of take whatever P and Z comes up with. And we'll have the ability at that meeting to decide if we actually want to make the decision and vote on this. Or if we want to point to July. I won't be here in July, so I would say we'd probably be pointing to August. But the the point is, we're we're trying, I think on the one hand, we're trying to have a timeline in place. But this is a big document, so if something comes up between now and June's meeting, and we're just not comfortable voting, you know, I guess I'm just letting everyone know it's okay. That's where we.
When is June's made?
June twenty.
Bob, I can't, I can't see us moving premature here. I can't see us approving with P and Z being acting as the board of adjustment. Appeals are gonna be against the P and Z decision in the first place. So what you have is a board of adjustments, it is effectively the same group that made the decision, the resident is appealing.
Um, possibly. The resident, let's say, for example, the resident, the code says the resident can't encroach in a setback, which is what the code says. If he wanted to encroach in the setback, because there was no option available to him other than to encroach in the setback, he can't make reasonable use of his property if he meets the setback standards. He could, he could ask for a variance to that standard. That would be what you'd hear. So it wouldn't be a question that you've already made a decision on. It would be a question of whether you want to vary or grant a variance to the standard that you set, that the side yard must be, for example, twenty feet. He may want to do it at at nineteen feet, because he can't fit his house on his property unless he gets the variance. And that question would come to you. And as you think about that question, I'll offer this comment, and this is one that Michelle and I kicked around quite a bit. When we first started on the revision of the land use, of creation of the land use code and revision of our municipal code, the issue initially went to the P and Z. And what we found when we were going through that process is we had several meetings in a row in which they didn't have a quorum, and so we are wasting time. They, we we thought about the fact that we were presenting it to them, and we'd have to turn around and present it to you from the ground up anyway. So why not just start with the with the board of trustees and then send the document to the P and Z to review as opposed to both of you having to chew on this thing for months and months and months? So that was the one of the reasons why the process has been you draft it, give it to the P and Z. P and Z reviews it and makes a recommendation, as opposed to the P and Z draft, drafting the document, giving it to you and you having to start from scratch on everything that's in the document, because it is the most important law in the in the town, and you're the ones required to pass laws, not the P and Z.
Bob, is there a requirement on the number of members or people that make up the board of adjustment?
In the statute, it requires that there be five members. Now, hear me out before you say, wow, that's wrong. This requires that you have five members, and it requires that you have at least four votes to approve the variance. Why is, why is it set at five? I don't really know. It is the the super majority requirement is because variances should not be given away. Variances should only be given when the property owner has a hardship that he can prove or she can prove. It's not something that, I like the color of your hair, or Johnny, you're really a nice guy, you got a variance. It's you got to prove that you have a hardship, because you're you're changing the way in which everybody has developed their property and should develop their property. You need it, you need a change. The five members can be changed by state law to a different number, and we're changing it from five to seven. And we're making those people the seven you. So when we, if we were ever have a variance submitted to them to the town, to Michelle, she would wrap it all up, put a bow on it, and send it to the board of trustees meeting, and you would all sit as the board of adjustment. You would open a little hearing, say, we're now sitting in the board of adjustment, here's the application. They would testify why they need the the variance, what their hardship is. You would hear staff comment on it, and then you would be asked to make a quasi judicial decision, weigh the evidence, and make a decision on whether or not to grant the variance. And if you, if if a citizen who lives next door or down the street is upset because you granted the variance, they can go to district court. If the applicant is upset that you that you didn't grant the variance, they can go to district court. That's the process, and if seven of you will sit just with different hats on, exactly the same seats you're sitting in, you'll just be sitting as the board of adjustment.
Are there any other questions on this for?
I think it's still early to make a recommendation who should sit on the board of adjustments.
I agree.
Okay. It's kind of vague, but okay.
Well, I'm just discussing it now.
To be continued with that. Okay. Okay, um, why don't we move on to the next item of business, which is the trail mapping. I'm sorry, unless you have anything else, I'll be okay. Okay. Um, let's go ahead to the trail mapping scope update.
So, as requested, staff, myself, the engineers met with trustee Dixon, vice chair Sinner. Trustee Hopkins was on the call for a while, as well as Deputy Clark to be, and went through the the scope, went through all the information. Kind of came to a consensus on what should be in there, how it should look, flow internal and external access, so what will be public facing versus what will be internal facing. For instance, you know, John, as the staff member for the open space and trails committee, will pull up the internal mapping and so that the committee can uphold the different information, review things. Or if there's a, as things become public, they they go to the public facing realm. But went through all of that, reviewed some of the concerns, thoughts that were discussed last month. And so the engineers came back with the new proposed scope and cost, which is included in your packet for a total of fourteen thousand two hundred and thirty eight dollars.
So I won the pool for last month, but this was gonna go up in price, right?
You win.
Just.
A future Dr. Pepper.
Okay.
Yep.
So then I I guess I'll I'll be. So then I, I guess I'll, I'll be pretty, I'll just put it right out there. Joel, is this what you guys want now? Is this, because, I, I, let me back up. Last month, we had some specific concerns and wanted to make sure that everything was included, like how the committee wants. Are we there? Are you guys good with what this is?
I reviewed it, I believe it's good. Paul, I would also ask that you comment.
Yeah, yes. Appreciate the opportunity to talk with the engineers and explain exactly what's needed to, to get a good resource database, which is the internal facing document, as well as the document that the public would eventually see. And, and keep the two separate and as needed modify both of them. If additional information comes in that's needed at the staff level, stays on the internal side. If a, if a, if a proposed trail becomes a modified trail, it then moves over to the other side. So it definitely addresses the comments that we don't bring forward. Okay.
Okay. So then here tonight, we, we do formally want to make a motion to approve this and send it to the legislature. Okay. I'll make them.
I was going to do it.
Oh, sorry, you go right ahead, Kelly.
I make a motion to approve the trail map scope twenty twenty-three dash five dash eleven.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion, I guess, if I check Robert's rules of order, yep, okay.
I just think, I mean, I mean, this has been such a long, long process that anything moving forward is progress. So I, I am strongly urging we move forward.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Yes.
Don't break it, I've got to use it in court. Oh, okay. I noticed it is pretty heavily scratched on the one side, it seems like court's been getting kind of.
John keeps everyone in order.
Okay, good, good. Okay, so, um, let's see, still we're okay on that item of business then?
Yes.
Um, okay, I guess we're into reports. Um, obviously, the mayor's not here, so we'll, we'll spare that report. Um, there's not really a report from the finance committee either. We haven't actually met to discuss it, it's just approval.
Yeah, finance will be needing a gym, he says, as promised, begin the budget process.
Oh, we knew that.
Well, I knew we had one going up, is that, but that date hasn't been set.
No.
No, okay. Okay. Trustee family, citizen advisor.
So we were unable to meet last week due to a scheduling.
It's a title, I don't know. Um, but spoiler alert, we did have a hundred and fifty-one responses to our dark skies survey. Um, interesting results. I'm not, am I allowed to say any of the results?
I think that would be best with the committee to make recommendations on. And I know that Charlie, um, and Luke had planned to attend to help present those recommendations next.
Okay, well then, I'm not making you any spoilers other than a hundred and fifty-one.
Do you have a breakdown of?
Sure do.
The, uh, the demographics of this hundred and fifty-one?
Sure do.
Do you share that?
No.
That part, you can't even be shared.
I can, I can tell you they're all, uh, I did verify that they're all Blue River residents.
All hundred and fifty-one?
Yep.
Now, now, this isn't as high as our short-term rental survey, but we are getting up there with citizen advisory survey feedback.
That's because, that's because all the short-term rental borrowers responded to the short-term rental survey.
Or people are excited to be involved, Ted. Um, we had a hundred and fifty-one residents respond to our dark sky survey, and, and we had interesting.
No, not residents responding, that's a thing.
No, no, and it was only sent to residents. And the reason I can say that, if you, if you filled out the survey, it did ask for your email name and address, which won't be made public, would you keep that, that part confidential? But what that does is allows me, myself, to verify that dark go random people getting the survey and filling it out. So it was actually verifying all the answers.
Is that, sorry, is that survey still open or is that closed?
It's, it's closed, um, I will say the results, if you want to read the results, even though citizen advisory hasn't met or given the recommendation yet, is under the citizen advisory, um, new packet from last month or from this month.
I'll show the gentleman.
Yeah, it's, it's on the website, they just haven't, the, the committee needs to sit down, review it, make whatever recommendations that they want to make back to the board.
Okay. Joel, open space and trails, you got anything to say?
Um, nothing more than what Michelle has already, what we talked about, um, the meeting that we had scheduled for the twenty-third, um, decided to cancel that and wait until the, uh, Moller map exercises.
Okay, cool. Okay, easy enough. Um, planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning commission did meet on the second day of this month. Uh, we kicked off with a presentation and kind of question and answer session with Bob, uh, to help kind of outline the process we're adopting the land use code. Uh, Bob was very kind to kind of provide a high-level overview of significant changes that were made, that we made as a board, or I think that we made as a board, um, to the planning zoning commission. Uh, provided some time, um, for, for some light questions. Um, and since that point, uh, members of the P and Z have been provided a copy of the red line and a review and kind of bring the recommendation to the next meeting, uh, next month. Um, had a few questions kind of about the variance process. And so Bob said we kind of walked through what that looks like, kind of related to, we discussed it earlier today with the Board of Adjustments, um, and variances. And just some general questions about the interim period, uh, that were also answered during the course of our meeting today. Um, and how, uh, variance or any kind of appeal might be made between now and when that is supposed to be adopted. So that, did quite a bit of that, and then we did eventually approve one application for new construction on Whispering Pines. Uh, there was some discrepancies in, uh, some of the planning documents, and so there's some discussion about, you know, how, uh, recommendations are made, or how directives that the P and Z might ask of an applicant are included in the submission process. Ultimately, uh, the application was approved, um, and there's record that it's about, um, conditions for re-submission to the P and Z. Yeah. Yeah, that was, that was me.
Okay. Transit.
Uh, shockingly, the ridership has dropped significantly from the January, February, March numbers down to the April numbers. Imagine that, it's very close.
I was going to say.
Finally, it closed. Middle of April, the, the numbers, ridership dropped right off, but still managed to commit an almost a hundred and seventy percent increase for two thousand and nineteen. So Transit Board is still very pleased with the ridership trivia to the new stops.
Can I ask a question about the new stops?
You just do.
Isn't the reason the bus stop sign needs to be directly in front of the town of Blue River?
Question, who else brought that question? Somebody else called me about that.
Well, it looks tacky.
You got to do it right.
It was you, that's right. Yeah, we were talking about something, Toby. Uh, that is scheduled to be moved, they haven't gotten around to it, they're waiting for the ground to fill up, and they go install all of those that you see stuck in tires, which are temporary. They'll be permanently installed in another locale. So that will be removed from the front of the Blue River town.
Will there be any, like, discussions with Michelle or David as to where to place them?
I think that's already going on, I think it's already occurred. I don't know that for sure, but I think it has. He was involved in selecting where besides, for the first place, maybe the safety tour. What was that, January, maybe?
See, delegation. I know, not me, I feel bad about it.
Nice work, nice work, Michelle.
It just looks tacky.
Yeah, it's, it's, it got moved, it wasn't there initially.
Right.
Somebody moved it.
And now it's like got rocks underneath it, so it really hangs out in front of our site.
You think it turns out to try to make it more bubble?
You think one of the county, one of the county of state probably.
Well, if anyone knows what we went through to get the town of Blue River signs to begin with, to now have a crooked bus sign.
Yeah, it does look tacky.
In a tire, I mean, I could go move it myself, but I.
You're pretty surprised by that, because that tire is so cement. But yes, that's.
Kelly has an access to the link.
That's true.
Maybe a tank.
Maybe a tank.
Maybe a tank. We're really running out of approval to come through.
The green, or, or.
When she gets to drive her fire truck, she can take that over.
I could.
Okay.
Sir, I, I found it amusing, I don't know if you guys also got the real estate, uh, yes, thing, plan, especially for you, Ted. And with the Blue River sign, and I, I, I kept getting a chunk of dependents from that picture.
Oh, the mailing from Remax.
Yes.
I didn't get credit for photo credit for it, but, yeah, cool.
Yeah, so we need like a watermark or something on the website. Remax.
I need, I need, I need missions, I, I took all those photos.
Okay. Trustee Slaughter, what you got on wildfire?
Uh, the wildfire council will have its quarterly meeting the day after tomorrow. Uh, at that time, I would hope that the field trip schedule will be sussed out. And I assume I'll be joined by Michelle for that meeting.
Yes.
Uh, if not, I'll provide you with my notes. So that, that, uh, that schedule hopefully will be made available, and we can publish that through the emails of however, Michelle. Uh, there's a webinar on Blue River East Project on Thursday, the twenty-fifth at five o'clock. The registration is required, and it's on the website under the community education series.
I signed up.
Yeah, I signed up too. And then there is a first-ever wildfire rendezvous from ten to two on Saturday, the twenty-seventh, at middle school. And there'll be representatives from fire, emergency response agencies, insurance industry, landscaping companies, et cetera.
At what time?
Ten to two, on the twenty-seventh of May, at the middle school. I don't have any control over any of it. I'm just, I'm just reporting the facts.
It's graduation that day.
So next month, hopefully, we'll have some more on the field trip schedule, uh, and wherever else we discuss the day after tomorrow. That is all.
Great, thank you.
What, what day was the Blue River East?
Twenty-fifth at five. It's a webinar, it requires registration on the town's website.
Oh, an event email is going out, a reminder tomorrow. You'll get a couple.
What she said.
Okay. Uh, there, there's no C dot update, there's still silent.
I, I do have an update, um, just from the Park County side. Um, it is my understanding that C dot did purchase two acres of land, uh, between Holland and the bottom of the pass, and they will begin, they are beginning construction on that side, but as of yet, we have not heard anything on this side.
Is it true that there's nothing in the ten-year plan? The revamped ten-year plan?
That is true. Not, not for, uh, chain up and.
Or chained down.
Or chained up.
On this side.
I've been told that they have no funding for this year. Not to say that it won't come back, but.
Right. Yep, wonderful C dot. Um, okay, Bob, attorney's report, oh, oh.
Yeah, he, uh, had to leave.
Okay, no problem.
He doesn't have a report.
Staff report. Um, there's a staff report attached, I'll show you.
I have an update, a very, very exciting, hot off the presses today update, I, I got a call this morning. Um, so as I noted last in my report, we, um, were unsuccessful in our, um, grant application for four hundred and five thousand to the state of Colorado Forest Service to do, um, various projects. Um, however, they called me today and are awarding us partial funding, um, to do right-of-way mitigation, um, over the span of three years, this is a three-year project, um, and three one-day, uh, chipping days, um, that we find at the park. Um, I'll be working with representatives from the Forest Service to, um, more specify the scope. They kind of sent me the additional questions that they need to do the final award, but, um, we have been awarded a hundred and five thousand to spend over the next three years, um, with matching funds, and we do have the matching funds currently and are available in our budget due to the fact that we didn't have as many preventable space grants. Um, so, um, yeah. Pretty excited about that, so we'll be able to begin addressing the right-of-way trees and, and mitigation throughout town.
Okay. Nice work. Um, anything else on staff reports?
Uh, we are fully staffed, we are the only, only police department in quite a ways that is fully staffed. Uh, but we are fully staffed, um, staff, they did, um, a two-day in-service training last, the last week?
This week.
Last week, and, um, we're getting ready for cleanup day, it's the Saturday, bring your junk. Um, and we'll, we're the events camp. We'll have the dumpsters out front here, um, same as always. Uh, we will be, um, surplusing some town furniture, um, some desks and things like that, that are no longer of use, so we'll be surplusing that, um, putting information out on that. Um, and then, um, as trustee Slaughter noted, we will do the webinar, um, that we're hosting it, but it is being put on by, um, Colorado State Forest Service to talk about the Blue River East project. Um, and then we have lessons in the park that'll be coming up, so look for information on that, we're still formulating all of that. Uh, the summit, community weed pulling event, AKA Weed Fest. Um, I'm perfectly okay with us calling it Weed Fest, and it's fun. Um.
Can we do it on April twentieth?
Yeah, that'll be July eighth, and, um, so we're going to have some information out soon on that, but, um, you will be receiving, I'm going to try to, you know, on a weekly schedule, at least shortly against calendar, get people excited about all the stuff that we got, um.
But it's going to go live until, like, September.
The, the weed and seed program goes from July first to September fifteenth. And we've got lots of seeds, we're going to have, um, a separate bin out here specifically for the collection of weeds. And, um, as well as we will have a nice cabin mailbox thing where you can gather your seeds, and we're all pretty excited banners, and, um, yeah, very excited about what's going on, the lessons in the park are literally going to be in the park. Um, so the, while, um, the preventable space presentation that Matt Benedict puts on every year, um, that'll be taking place there, but we're also going to talk about noxious weeds, have some information on noxious weeds, because it's going to be right in conjunction and kicking off all of those things. And then we are planning a, um, lesson in the park in August. Um, still working on details, got to work with the citizen advisory group on the details of that, but it's, the date picked is supposed to be the height of the place seeds.
The meteor shower.
Yes, the meteor shower, I, I looked up the date, and that's how that date was looked. So, um, lots of information to come on that.
Okay.
Is it possible to meet our fully-staffed town? I know that our officers only work like forty-eight hours, and some of them don't live up here, but maybe even through Zoom, um, so.
Yeah, they'll try to, we'll try to see if, if we can get them to attend via Zoom. Um, one of them lives in Fort Collins, and the other one in ED, there's, and then, um, our fourth officer lives in, in Dillon Valley, so she's a little bit easier, um, but, but she that live.
Yes.
And see if we can't get them, yes, and.
We have one little job in, so I don't see.
BD, what is that?
Quick question, did, uh, did, I, I believe you told us that we had paid the two hundred and fifty dollars for the international clearance guys, so it's paid.
For the, the membership?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
The application or pre-application or?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have the application, and we got back. The citizen advisory met with the dark skies dude and we got Aaron and we got back. Recognizations. A ten-year plan for recognition.
Thank you.
But sure did.
Okay, is there any other business there I ask?
Would you entertain a citizen call?
Three minutes, Dan.
You got it, we're not gonna stand up, Dan, clearly, uh, twenty-three rustic, I was hoping Bob would stay on, um. You know, I'm pretty active in that land use code. Uh, the first go around, I've looked at those red lines. Um, but one of the questions he answered was whether RP one was based on our discussions. I, I don't know, you know, it's the timeline for what you have, I appreciate it. I just don't, I don't wanna come to PNC's, uh, public hearing and bombard them. I'd, I'd love to ask a couple of questions, I just don't know that now is the time. There's, there's a couple of things, you know, one is when will you update the, the map of the, of the zones? Uh, will that be part of the process? Has it already been done? Do we know?
Well, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, but we, at, at whatever point in time we pass the land use code. That doesn't also automatically mean that everybody's zoning changes.
Right, there's a difference between the, what's written, the definition of the zones and the map itself.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was curious, like transitional district, TV, where, where that is, how it's.
Transition district already exists, um.
It's on that map.
It's, it's on, it's on that map, it's the brown. Uh, so those, that already exists, the only, there are two new zone districts in there, um, including the RP one. And, um, the multi-use district, I think that's what it's called, um.
So where I was gonna go with this for a moment is once we pass the land use code. The map probably needs to be double-checked. That it's up to date under the current, the new code, but. Future changes to the map will continue to occur. As a homeowner comes in and elects to change from R one to R E one.
Yeah.
We'll have to ask on the.
That, that's fine, where I was going with it though is, you know, like with RP one. The initial intent, what he and I discussed, and, and obviously that's water on the bridge, but it's, it's come this far now. Was, you know, we had lots of discussions on not subdividing lots that were part of what we at the time were calling historic Blue River. You know, the old existing plats, um, anything that was pre-platted. This is, it's evolved into, you know, building heights setbacks, kind of a catch-all. Uh, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I don't know, it just got away from the original intent. You know, the concern was, how do we allow subdivision? But not have it throughout the neighborhoods? And it was, well, the neighborhoods don't meet the minimum lot size. And so the discussion was, well, rather than have every application come up as non-conforming. Create RP one for that purpose, that everyone existing at some date was RP one. And that everything new going forward would be R one. So it got a little crossed up, so I don't expect us to solve it. But I bring it up here because, you know, that was at least based, I mean, I, I had discussions one-on-one with him back March of twenty-two even. As this evolved, so that was one thing, um, the other is, uh. The right of, the, the public right of way. Uh, I, you guys have kind of talked about this very little over the last whatever year. But, you know, it's my understanding that through either, um, donation or, um, the town's continuous uninterrupted management. I, I'm assuming that means the town will claim for scriptive right on all the roads?
I think that's a reasonably safe assumption.
So the reason I ask is, it's not clear, so we heard about wildfire mitigation in the right of way. What constitutes the right of way? It's obviously not the old road easement. And, uh, you know, maybe the town would look at it as it's where the new road is or where the road exists, plus something. But I question it because that something has never been defined, nor has it been continuously maintained or, or dealt with. So when the town decides to come through and, and either. Use snow removal or chop trees down, then there's the question there, what is this public right of way, you know? Zone district. Um. You know, it also mentions underground utilities. Not, to my knowledge, not very many roads have had any continuous or uninterrupted use of underground utilities. So I don't know if the town has the intent to do that now, but the flavor in your mouths after. The discussion on Spruce Creek Road was probably, we don't wanna deal with the problem. But one of the nice things that came out of the last few years is the town has their world cafe and community engagement on projects. You know, if you take claim of these roads, will that all go away? How does it look in the future? Is the town just coming in and strong-arming their way through? You know, we never, we never heard discussion at the board level on this particular zone district. And so I ask you, you know, again, this isn't the time, but, you know, we have maybe two public hearings left. And rather than blindside a public hearing, I just throw it out there. Um, I, I question RP one whether it's just a catch-all or is it specifically for setbacks, building heights? And minimum lot size, because if it's a catch-all, that's, you know, get out of jail free card. That was definitely never an intention of, of mine through discussion, and it doesn't read that way, you know, read it, but, you know, I ask it here. Um. You know, I guess I'll leave it there, but, you know, there's, there's questions. And I don't know if this board intended for, for that end result. And if they did, so be it, you know, that's your decision to make.
Um. Well, as usual, Dan, you've covered a few things there that I'm definitely gonna defer to my pops. Um. I will say, at least for me, a couple of the new zones, we'll call them. I think is in an effort to get ahead of the what-if down the line of what could go on with rooms and facilities. Um. When I say that, I also don't think that I personally think we're gonna start strong-arming our way through road projects.
It's just not about what this board thinks necessarily, this is a land use document that will move forward. And so it enables that, at least that's how.
It, it does enable that, but as we've always discussed, uh, just 'cause this board approves this document, doesn't mean the next board doesn't come in and throw it out the window and start again. So, um. I'm, I'm just telling you, you know, in general, I, I don't think we've had any discussions about using it if this is a strong-arm tactic. I think a lot of this is about trying to cure some of the issues we've already run across. Um. You know, we, some of this, once it's in place, might flush out new issues that we haven't considered. We gotta go back and reevaluate. I do have some concerns about the RP one. Being a, a open-ended get out of jail-free card. For what it's worth, I think that's also some of what Bob was expressing tonight, that that type of a zone is actually kind of unusual. Um. Because again, the non-conforming properties, if hypothetically, a non-conforming property burnt to the ground and it was built. In the setbacks and say a foot off of somebody else's house. Do we really want a property like that to be able to switch over to RP one? And then they're essentially grandfathered in and they get to build back. These, and I'm, I'm kinda simplifying the language that Bob's put in.
You're spot on.
That's the issue, I, I do agree with Dan, that it was more about. Maybe say some of the more palatable non-conformant issues, how do we deal with versus some of the issues you want to go away?
Yeah, in my mind, his code, I mean, I've read it. Literally, and without it, the language accomplishes much of your concern, so you've got a, a loss of over a certain percentage. You can't continue to encroach, right, so say I encroach, which my house does. I can't, I can't build on that side aside and increase it, whether you've got RP one or not. Code says I can't, I can only, I could make improvements or I could encroach onto the other side, or I could encroach less. Really, to me, if, this is an issue county-wide, and it's probably an issue statewide in many states, but. Much of this town was zoned, or excuse me, platted prior to zoning, as is the county. So in the county, they just sprinkled zoning around after things were platted. And so here, in my mind, the solution always was anything existing and that, you know, again, I was calling it historic Blue River. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna go in depth here, 'cause that's not, I don't wanna take all the time. But to me, it's zoned as platted. So as we were plating that way, so when you come up, it's not non-conforming, this is how the lot was platted. So you pick, you pick a timeline, whether it is the last subdivision to be created. And so we think a Timber Creek Estates or McCullough Gold Reserve, we had a subdivision up on, um. Oh, it's a Louise Blossom, so maybe you just say that is the date, anything planted prior to it, it's zoned as platted, so it's not non-conforming. But you, you still can't encro- encroach more, you still can't break those rules more. And, and yet you still have your R one district for any new lots created. That to me was the intent of it, so I just wanted to clarify where my mind was, and I don't have access to Bob, and I certainly don't think you'd want me to. To spend your dollars to talk to him, but that was, you know, we, we had specific dis- uh, discussions in March of twenty-two. Um, pretty in-depth, and, you know, I, I read these red lines and. Uh, for the most part, I think this is good code, there are some things, RP one is one concern for me. Public right of way is a concern only because I don't wanna see that, I, I like what we've established. I understand how it can be frustrating as a board, if you wanna accomplish something, but, um, I question things like underground utilities. Do you really have the right? Uh, I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, but I don't wanna see the town opened up to litigation over something like that, and maybe they won't be. And, and maybe they can't be, and so that, that would probably be a Bob discussion, but, you know, there's other, there's other things here, um.
If I, if I may, Dan, I, I know the board, we all really appreciate your thoughts, we also as a board, two meetings ago. Went through how the public comment and things are, works to be made and, and not allowing this kind of thing happen at the end. So I would, I would.
You did, you did, you missed last month, there was a discussion about, um, having a second public comment at the end of the meeting.
Wonderful, but it was still three minutes, right?
Okay.
So my point is, I would love to hear all of these comments, but I would like them, like, can you, can you put it in writing and? Like, I would love to have it as a part of our next packet of your concerns and, and, and where they're at, so that we can go back and.
Well, the issue there is you're in a public hearing then, so I don't know, that's why I raised it at the end of your meeting, I didn't know where Bob was going with the discussion. I don't know how to, how to.
Here's what I was gonna offer, Dan, um, being C Doug's gone dead. Why don't, why don't you and me get together in the next couple of weeks and, and I'll hear out everything you gotta say. And, uh, take it to Bob.
That's fine, and I'm not trying, Kelly, I apologize. I'm not trying to commandeering your time, I just, I hear my name raised in more than one instance from the attorney. And I was engaged in this discussion pretty heavily, that's the only reason I bring it up.
No, I agree, that's the last thing, I would, I would like to, like, I hear it, but I would like to be able to reference it back.
I understand.
Right, so like, I would like to have, you know, I'm not dismissing your concerns, I think they're valid, I would just like to be able. To read them and, you know, isn't, isn't this still public, like, even though you're giving us your feedback and. You know, you email it to us or you write it out or whatever, like. Even you saying it now is still part of public.
It is, what I tried to do though, Kelly, uh, let's leave it here. Is I, I appreciate Mark's offer, I'm gonna take him up on it, and where that goes is up to the board. But what I didn't wanna do is come to a public hearing and blindside either, I, I will still go to that, and I will still have questions before Lauren. I don't wanna blindside the board, and not that I'm gonna change anyone's. Want to commentate your efforts, I like to make them clean, because that's what a public hearing should look like, I think, is to flesh these things out, so.
But I would like to hear, like, I would, you know, before we go to the public hearing, I'd like to know your thoughts. I hear what you're saying, that you don't wanna come in and, you know, take over an entire hearing with your, you know, with your concerns. I would just like to be able to process them on paper.
Fair enough, well, let me, let me chew on it a little bit, I'll, I'll chat with Mark, I appreciate it.
Yeah, that's why. Why don't you and Dan? Yeah, why don't you and Dan get together and work through this whole thing? And I, I think it's plausible to put together something for the trustees, uh, ahead of the hearing. May- maybe some, some input from Bob too.
Both, both written comments. Yeah, written comments can also be submitted prior to public hearing.
Yeah, I, I do think in all fairness to Dan. Bob keeps bringing up Dan.
No, I know, yeah, I, I'm not dismissing it, I just like, I think it would be helpful to have everything together and.
So. Yeah.
You know, every, you know, we are gonna have public comments, but I guarantee it's not gonna be to the level that. That Dan has thought through all of these things and have them in, you know, coordinated this, this, and this, that's all I'm asking for is.
You're giving me too much credit, there's no coordination.
Well.
I, I, let's see what they appreciate.
I'll work with Mary and Jane, June's up there for me, it will be the committee.
I love the.
So see clearly, Dan. Okay, so I'll throw it out there again, any other business before we adjourn?
I make a motion to the fair.
Okay, so moved.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. What is it, eight or nine? I think we set a new record, because we came really close.